We're going to open our meeting, a regular council meeting, April 15th at 6:24 PM. We now are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Row call.
Mayor Biaseada.
Here.
Law Director Moore.
Present.
Director of Finance Frank. Councilman-at-Large Elliott. Councilwoman-at-Large Kelly.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Costanzo.
Present.
Board One Councilman Curriasis.
Here.
Board Two Councilman Martin.
Here.
Board Three Councilman Snitzke.
Present.
Board Four Councilman Moro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties Bryda. Building Commissioner Grassi. City Engineer Gerson.
Present.
I'm going to move to excuse Councilman Elliott and Finance Director Frank from this evening's meeting. Do I have a second?
Costanzo, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
I'm going to move to amend this evening's agenda and waive the 24-hour rule and add ordinance number 29-2025 as item 8K and resolution number 1-2025 as 8L. Do I have a second?
Costanzo, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Before we go any further, I want to introduce our Deputy Finance Director Bill Van Alp. Welcome, Bill. We're now going to go to the reading and disposal of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
Have read the council minutes for council meeting, March 25th, 2025. I find no errors or omissions, therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
Curriasis, second row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
We have no resolution to commendation this evening. We now go to reports of committees, planning, zoning, economic development. Councilman Snitzke.
Yes, planning, zoning, economic development will meet next meet on April 29th. Previous minutes are filed with the clerk.
Thank you. Public Works, Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We last met tonight. Meeting minutes are pending. My next meeting is May 13th.
Thank you. Community Service, Councilperson Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We last met this evening. The minutes are pending and our next meeting is May 13th.
Police and Safety last met this evening. Minutes are pending. Next meeting is May 13th. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was March 25th and our next meeting will be on April 29th.
Thank you. Rules, ordinances and ethics, Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our rules and ordinance next meeting is April 29th.
Thank you. Finance, Civil Service and Personnel last met this evening. Minutes are pending. Next meeting is May, I mean, April 29th. We have no appointments or confirmations this evening. We have no communications, petitions or claims. Council open to the audience on legislation only. We now go to the reading of ordinances and resolutions and now we go to the third reading of amended ordinance number 15-2025.
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to suspend the rules under the Charter and read amended ordinance 15-2025 by title only for its third and final reading.
Morrow, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 979.04c prohibited uses as contained in chapter 979, Rockside Road, South Planned Unit Development District of Title IX, zoning use districts of Part IX, Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to approve the emergency clause in section four of amended ordinance 15-2025.
Morrow, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro. Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to pass amended ordinance 15-2025 as an emergency measure.
Morrow, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 15-2025 has passed. We now go to the third reading of ordinance number 17-2025.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Kelly.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance number 17-2025 by title only for its third and final reading.
Martin, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend chapter 167, peddlers, transient dealers and solicitors as contained in Title IX Business Regulations of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Kelly.
I move that we pass ordinance number 17-2025.
Martin, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-2025 has passed. We now go to the second reading of ordinance number 19-2025.
Creating the Rockside Road Tax Increment Financing District declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, requiring the distribution of a portion of those service payments to the Parma City School District and specifying that the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels within each incentive district.
We now go to the second reading of ordinance number 22-2025.
An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property within the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section 5709.41, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments, specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 23-2025.
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance 23-2025 by title only for its first and final reading.
Curriasis, second row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a professional service contract with Tony Paoletta for the purpose of providing painting and craft workshop events at the City of Seven Hills Recreation Complex and Facilities and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we approve the emergency clause found in section three of the ordinance.
Curriasis, second row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we pass ordinance 23-2025 as an emergency measure.
Curriasis, second. Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-2025 has passed. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 24-2025.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just in the interest, ordinances, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up in committee, ordinance is 24 through 28. All are the same basic thing. They're removing petty cash from all our various departments. We're abolishing petty cash. We're going to go paperless. It's petty cash isn't used often. It's extra bookkeeping. It's just not needed. So in the event we have a small expense going forward, we'll put it on a credit card. It's a paper trail and it's easier audit. It's better all around. And what it is, is each one's is a different department. So like in 26 is law, 25, 27 is the fire department, 28 I believe is the service department, and then the other one wants probably the mirrors, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if you want to like maybe move.
Well, we went through, I know they went back and forth, Aaron and the law department, and it was determining need to do five separate ordinances.
Absolutely. But do we, do we want to do this three more times? So maybe move to amend, to add the emergency.
I mean.
So I understand why we need to have five ordinances.
And we can just do the first reading tonight, the next meeting.
Or you could, sure, then you probably could even do a division of the question. Yeah, so there's no division of the question. I moved approved 20 ordinances, 24 through 28 and do it in one.
Yeah, next meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll read it tonight and next meeting we'll amend and add the emergency and just do one.
Sure, I was just trying to help.
No, that's good. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 24-2025.
An ordinance to amend chapter 121 council as contained in chapter 121 council of Title III Legislative of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of repealing section 121.11 petty cash.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 25-2025.
An ordinance to amend chapter 125 mayor as contained in title V Administrative of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of replacing section 125.09 petty cash account.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 26-2025.
An ordinance to amend chapter 127 Department of Law as contained in title V Administrative of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of repealing section 127.07 petty cash account.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 27-2025.
An ordinance to amend chapter 137 Department of Fire as contained in title V Administrative of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of repealing section 137.05 petty cash account.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 28-2025.
An ordinance to amend chapter 139 Department of Public Service and Properties as contained in title V Administrative of Part I Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of repealing section 139.08 petty cash.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 29-2025.
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance 29-2025 by title only for its first and final reading.
Curriasis, second row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement for project design services by GPD Group between the municipalities of Seven Hills and Parma for the resurfacing of Broadview Road from Sprague Road to Skyview Road, authorizing an amount for GPD Group professional services according to their fee schedule and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to approve the emergency clause in the last section of ordinance 29-2025.
Curriasis, second row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to pass ordinance 29-2025 as an emergency measure.
Curriasis, second. Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance number 29-2025 has passed. We now go to the first reading of resolution number 1-2025.
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
I moved to suspend the rules of council and adopt, adopt resolution number 1-2025 by title only for its first and final reading.
Kelly, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the municipalities of Seven Hills, Ohio, United States of America, and Corino Asenio, Province of Procinon, Italy, in the spirit of friendship and goodwill to support and encourage opportunities in the mutually beneficial exchange of ideas and information and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
I move to approve the emergency clause in section four of the resolution.
Kelly, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
I move to pass resolution number 01-2025.
Point of order, adopt.
I'm sorry. I move to adopt resolution number 0-2025 as an emergency measure.
Kelly, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Resolution number 1-2025 has been adopted. Council open to the audience. Reports and communications from the mayor, safety director.
None this evening, but I would like to request executive session for litigation after miscellaneous comments.
Okay. Reports from directors, deputy director Van Alp. Okay, thank you. Director Lawmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our reports are filed with the clerk of council.
Thank you. Director of Public Service Bryda.
Yes, my monthly report is on file with the clerk.
Thank you. City, city engineer Gerson.
Thank you. My monthly report's on file with clerk of council.
Thank you. Building Commissioner Grassi.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report's on file with the clerk.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move to go into executive session for pending litigation. Do I have a second?
Costanzo, second.
Row call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Moro.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Directors, you are excused. Yes. Directors, you're excused.